All those in attendance and special welcome to our MLA Julie Van Aksom who is in the audience. Nice to have you here Julie. And we'll call the meeting to order. It's a public hearing for April the first, two thousand and twenty-five. And we will, as far as roll call, I would declare that all councillors are here and present. I would note that the Municipal Government Act deems that council members not in attendance at a public hearing are ineligible to vote on the issue at the related upcoming council meeting. In a public hearing, the council's role is to hear the staff presentation as well as comments from the audience, from the public, on the file and information presented. There will be no debate, however, any member of council may ask questions of clarification from either staff or the public. So, our first item of business this evening is an application to rezone a property on Prospect Road in New Minas to enable multi-unit dwellings. Alice Jacob, our municipal planner, will be presenting. Ms. Jacob, I turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is an application for a land use bylaw map amendment to rezone a property located on Prospect Road, New Minas. This is a standard process we follow for every application, every rezoning application. The first step is to receive a complete application and the second step is a public information meeting. Public information meetings are usually held to gather feedback and comments from the public on a particular application. The public information meetings are held in the community where the properties, subject properties are located and properties within five hundred feet are notified for the meeting. And it is also advertised on our website and social media sites. The third step of the process is a staff review. At this stage, staff usually review the application against the applicable policies and we also reach out to other departments, both internal and external, for their feedback on relevant aspects. Then a staff report is prepared. The staff report is then presented to the planning advisory committee. Planning advisory committee reviews the staff report and if they make a positive recommendation, the application goes for a first reading with council. Council will forward it to a public hearing. A public hearing is again, an opportunity for public to come in and share their comments and concerns directly with the council. Public hearings are advertised on our website and social media sites. Properties within five hundred feet are also notified about the public hearing. After the public hearing, the application goes to the council for a second reading, at which point a decision will be made on the application. And the decision will be advertised on our website and the application will enter into a fourteen day appeal period. County of Kings map, the red circle on the map is the approximate location of the property within New Minas. And this is a view of the subject property, an aerial view. The subject property is about five point five nine acres. The axis is from Prospect Road. There are no existing buildings. As can be seen, the majority of the property is covered in vegetation. There is Highway one oh one to the south of the property. The neighboring, neighboring properties to the east and to the west are developed with residential uses. And to the north, to the north and also to the northeast, there are a few commercial uses. So, to give a better picture, this is where the Kent Building Supplies is located in New Minas. The property was acquired by the applicant in two thousand and twenty-four. As I said, the proposal is to build multi-unit dwellings. The total number of units being proposed currently is one twenty-one. The reason for the rezoning is because the property is located within a zone called the Highway Commercial, C five zone. And C five zone does not permit residential uses. Rezoning to the mixed commercial residential, which is C three zone, would enable the proposed development. Property owners are not required to submit a site plan as part of rezoning application. This is just a rough sketch of the proposal that was submitted along with the application. The proposal here is to develop the property in two different phases. The initial phase will focus on the front portion of the property where the applicant is proposing about around four multi-unit dwellings, which would accommodate about forty units. This will begin with the construction of two eight-unit dwellings initially. And the second phase will focus on the rear portion of the property, which will accommodate the remaining number of units. As mentioned, the current plan is for one twenty-one units. However, the rezoning could permit up to one thirty-five units on the property. But the, the final number of units will however depend on various factors. So, the proposal will have to meet the other requirements of the land use bylaw. It will have to meet the parking requirements, amenity spaces requirements and the other requirements of the zone. And there are also a few constraints. So, the yellow section on, on this site plan are eastments, which are in favor of Nova Scotia power. So, nothing permanent would be possible, no permanent structures would be possible on the eastment. They might be able to have temporary structures or parking or any landscape features on the eastment. And then, because of its proximity to Highway one oh one, they are also required to maintain a ten meter setback from the highway right of way. So, these factors will ultimately add to, ultimately result in how many units will be possible on the property. And this is the zoning map. The property, the subject property and most of the properties in the neighborhood are within the C five zone, which is the Highway Commercial zone. The C five zone permits commercial uses that usually serve the traveling public. And this property was recently rezoned to the C three. This one was within the C five zone earlier. And we have the O one zone to the north. O one zone is the environmental constraint zone, which restricts development. It is usually applied to areas that are prone to flooding and slope failure or erosion. And then we have the C six zone, which is for, which is a comprehensive business development zone. And this is where the Kent Building Supplies is located. There is also the country residential, A four zone, which is for low density neighborhoods in predominantly agricultural areas. And then we also have the commercial recreation, P one zone, which is for recreational uses like campgrounds, golf courses, gun ranges and a few other uses. And this is the future land use. The property will continue to be in the commercial designation in the future as well. And some of the photographs of the subject property. There's a key map for reference to the right. This is the axis, the existing axis to the property from Prospect Road. And this is the view from the axis looking north. So, this property here is located with, this area here is located within the environmental constraint, O one zone. And this is a view from the property's axis looking east and this is the view looking west. And this is this, this is the, these are the views of the central portion of the property. As can be seen, it's mostly covered in vegetation. And I believe this is the, this is one of the eastment that runs through, runs through the property. This is the rear portion of the property. So, behind this vegetation is Highway one oh one. A public information meeting was held for this application in July last year in the New Minas Fire Hall. We had two village commissioners and a member of the public present. The member of the public was supportive of the proposal and expressed the opinion that more housing is required in the region and also expressed concerns regarding lengthy processing times. The file was also presented to the New Minas Village Commission in December last year. The village commissioners did not indicate any concerns. They provided feedback to the applicant regarding getting connected to sewer and water infrastructure for consideration at the time of applying for permits. This is a policy within our municipal planning strategy that enables this rezoning. The policy enables council to consider rezoning land from one zone enabled within a designation to another enabled within the same designation. The policy directs us to this policy, which is three point two point three, which, which, which lists all the zones, zones that are permitted within the commercial designation. And criteria A, all zones in policy three point two point two above, and this is three point two point two. Both the Highway Commercial Zone, which is the current zoning of the property and the Mixed Commercial Residential C three zone, which is a proposed zone for the property, are listed within this policy. As a result, council is able to consider this rezoning. This is, this is an additional policy that applies to all rezoning applications. The first criteria of the policy, council has to be satisfied that the intent of the proposed C three zone is met through this rezoning and whether it would be appropriate to place the C three zone on the subject property. So, this is the intent of the C three zone, which states lands located in the zone are intended to complement established commercial areas. These areas should, shall generally be located on main transportation corridors and associated side streets that have commercial development. Traditional main street areas within commercial areas that have not yet experienced much development or areas where flexibility between residential and commercial uses is desired and to permit both residential and lower impact commercial uses such as local retail or business offices in the same area of a growth center. So, again, going back to the zoning map and an aerial view of the area. So, the property has frontage on Prospect Road, which is a main transportation corridor. So, it meets that aspect of the intent of C three zone. As I mentioned, the property is within, currently within the C five zone and the neighboring properties are also within the C five zone. The C five zone is meant for commercial uses that usually serve the traveling public. And, sorry. Placing the C three zone on the subject property, the C three zone, as I mentioned, permits flexibility. It permits both residential uses and commercial uses. Placing the C three zone on the subject property would acknowledge the existing residential uses. So, although the property is within the C five zone and the neighboring properties are within the C five zone, most of these properties are currently developed with residential uses. So, the C three zone, as it permits both residential and commercial uses, it would acknowledge these existing residential uses. And also, the uses permitted within the C three zone would be compatible with the existing character of the area. So, staff are of the opinion that the proposed zone placement would be appropriate. And criteria B of policy five point three point five, council has to be satisfied that the impacts of the proposed development and the other uses permitted within the new zone are appropriate. So, the C five, C five zone, that is the Highway Commercial Zone, permits, as I said, permits commercial uses that are usually, that usually serve the traveling public. So, it permits uses like gas bars, bus stations, taxi stations, automotive sales and repair and heavy equipment facilities and a few other uses. Those are considered kind of higher impact when compared to the uses permitted within the proposed zone, which is the Mixed Commercial Residential. So, this Mixed Commercial Residential or the C three zone permits all forms of residential uses. And it also permits commercial uses that are considered lower impact and that are desired close to a residential neighborhood. So, we are kind of moving from a higher impact zone to a lower impact zone. And as I mentioned earlier, the area is currently primarily developed with residential uses at this time. And the uses within the C three zone would be compatible with the surrounding uses. So, it is staff's opinion that the proposed C three zone and the permitted, the proposal and the permitted uses within the C three zone are appropriate. And criteria C of policy five point three point five, council has to be satisfied that the proposal meets the general criteria. The proposal was assessed against the relevant criteria within the general policy and it was found to be consistent with the intent of the municipal planning strategy. There are no conflicts with any municipal or provincial programs, bylaws or regulations. There are no finance, there's no financial impact on the municipality because of the proposal. There are no issues with land, land use compatibility. The proposed uses for residential and the neighboring uses are residential as well. The property is within proximity to schools, recreation and community facilities. We contacted the Department of Public Works, which is a provincial department, for their input on traffic hazards, congestion or access or egress related issues. They did not indicate any concerns. We also contacted the New Minas Fire Department for their input on fire protection services and equipment and they did not indicate any concerns either. The village of New Miners was contacted as well and they did not indicate any concerns regarding sewer or water services. And with regards to potential for flooding or serious drainage problems, the applicant will be required to submit a drainage plan at the time of permitting and it will be reviewed at that time. There are no issues with regards to site suitability. Again, coming back to the process, the public information meeting for this application was, was held in July last year. And the, the file was presented to the Planning Advisory Committee in February eleven, on February eleven, two thousand and twenty-five. It went to first reading with council in March and we are currently at the public hearing. Properties within five hundred feet were notified about the hearing and it was also advertised on our website and social media sites. Soon after the public hearing, there will be a second reading and a decision will be made on the application, which will be advertised on our website and the application will move on to a fourteen day appeal period. I also need to make a small correction. So, during the Planning Advisory Committee meeting, I kind of mentioned that the, that Prospect Road is not within the priority sidewalk priority map. I was actually wrong. It is identified within the sidewalk, sidewalk priority map. However, the installation and maintenance of a sidewalk would be the village's responsibility. That concludes the presentation. I pass it back to the chair for comments from the public.
Thank you, Ms. Jacob. Just to explain to the public once again, council sits in a quasi judicial capacity for public hearings. And so, it doesn't engage in debate and doesn't argue with the presenter. It is necessary, however, that everyone has a good sense of what's being presented so we can go to the questions of clarification. So, if there's any, in case there's any misunderstandings of any part by any councillor. So, at this time, I would ask if there's any questions of clarifications from any councillor. Councillor McPherson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the planner. This question may seem familiar, but I'm going to ask it again. Is there any requirement for development of a hundred and twenty-one units? And potentially, I think I heard a hundred and thirty-five, for the contribution? 135, for the contribution of any amenities? For example, green space, playgrounds, contributions to the community, to community halls, to recreation, anything at all? Is there any obligation, once again, on the part of the developer to contribute in any of those ways with this development? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the counselor. If the question's about open space requirement to the community, there is no such requirement to the community, but they will be required to provide amenity spaces within the development. The amenity spaces would have to be about 100 square feet per unit or 10 percentage of the total lot area, whichever is greater. And the amenity space could be outdoor areas within the development, which could be recreational areas, outdoor recreational areas, play areas, or anything. Or it could be indoor, which could be indoor recreational spaces, or the balconies, patios, or anything with that regards.
Thank you. I have a question, Ms. Jacob. I notice that one of the lots next door was rezoned C3. So my question would be, has there been any concerns about that since that was rezoned that you're aware of?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to you. I'm not aware of any concerns. We did not receive a lot of concerns while we were processing the application. That was processed by me as well. So we did not receive any concerns at the time. I am not aware if we have received any other concerns or anything once it was processed.
Okay, all right. That's fine. That was my question. So at this time, then, I would go to the members of the public. If there's a member of public that would like to address council on this matter, I would ask that you come forward to the mic, state your name and your address for the record, and as a reminder that you have a maximum five-minute time limit per speaker. So please address your address to council and not to the presenter. No? Okay. Well, that's good. We'll move on then to our second item on the agenda. We do have a full agenda because we got a council meeting after, so we'll move on to the second item, which is another application to enable a multi-unit development. This application is to rezone the property at 5329 Prospect Road in the Minus, and will also be presented by Ms. Jacob. Ms. Jacob, I turn the floor over to you again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, again, another application for rezoning at Prospect Road. The application is to rezone a property located at 5329 Prospect Road, New Minus. County of King's map, and the red circle on the map is the approximate location of the subject property within New Minus. And this is the aerial view of the property. The property is about approximately one acre in area, and the axis is from Prospect Road. It is close to the other property that I presented earlier. The property has a brook running along the rear portion, the Eldakin Brook, and the neighboring properties are mostly residential. There are no existing structures on the property. However, the property used to have a mobile home and accessory structures. The previous property owner performed automotive repairs on the property. So as a result, there was salvage waste on the property. Both the municipality and Nova Scotia Environment had received complaints regarding unsightly premises. However, the new property owner, once they acquired the property, they demolished the structures and cleared all the garbage and salvage from the property. The property owners acquired the property in 2023. The proposal is to build multi-unit dwelling or dwellings. Again, the reason for the rezoning is the property is located within the highway commercial C5 zone. The highway commercial zone does not permit residential uses as of right. The rezoning to the mixed commercial residential C3 zone would enable the proposed development. This is the zoning map of the area. The property is within the C5 zone, which is for commercial uses, meant to serve traveling public. And then there is a C3 zone, which is a property that I mentioned was recently rezoned to the C3 from the C5. And then we have the O1 zone, which is the environmental constraint zone, and the country residential A4 zone, which is meant for low-density neighborhoods in predominantly agricultural areas. So the proposal is for multi-unit dwelling or dwellings. Just based on the area of the property, the property owner could have up to 24 units on the subject property, but there are a few constraints that might limit the development potential. As I mentioned, there is the Eldakin Brook, which passes through the rear portion of the property, and the land use bylaw requires at least a 50-feet setback from a water course. So that 50-feet setback will have to be maintained for any development on the property. And the brook is on a lower level, and the property is actually on a kind of higher elevation. So the area surrounding the brook has steep slope. So because of the steep slope and because of the presence of the water course, most of the property is within the environmentally sensitive area overlay, has that overlay applied. So, sorry. The hatch portion that we see here is the environmentally sensitive overlay. The overlay does not restrict development. They could develop on that portion. It's just that they will have to meet additional requirements of the overlay. And then the development will also have to meet all the other requirements of the land use bylaw with regards to parking, amenity spaces, solid waste storage, and all the other requirements of the zone. So because of all those constraints and as it has to meet all the other requirements, 24 units might not be possible on the property. And photographs of the subject property. This is where the mobile homes and accessory dwellings, accessory structures were located previously, which is kind of relatively flat. And this is the rear portion of the property. This is where the brook runs through, and this is where the steep slope exists. It's not clear on this picture, but it is kind of steep. And this is a view from the axis of the subject property, looking east, and this is looking west. This is the property to the north across Prospect Road, developed with residential use. And this is the western portion of the property. Again, there is the brook here, and there's also a steep slope, which kind of drops down. And this is a neighboring dwelling to the west. A public information meeting was not required for this application because public information meetings are only required for rezoning properties that are more than an acre. This is approximately an acre, so a PIM was not required. However, we received a call from one of the neighbors expressing concerns regarding garbage and debris, improper disposal of garbage and debris on the property. This concern was passed on to the building and enforcement team, and they investigated the matter, but they did not find anything during their site visit. And the neighbor also had questions regarding the maximum number of units that could be developed on the property. The file was presented to the New Minus Village Commission in December last year. There were questions of clarification on the number of units possible, and there were questions about the previous use and whether the use had any environmental impact. Again, staff investigated this matter. We reached out to the building and enforcement team and also to Nova Scotia Environment. Nova Scotia Environment mentioned that they had received a complaint about dangerous and unsightly premises, but the complaint was closed soon after, like two or three months after it was received. So we are assuming that the complaint did not yield anything requiring further action. And the village commissioners also provided feedback to the applicant regarding sewer and water infrastructure to be considered at the time of applying for permits. This is a policy within the municipal planning strategy that enables this rezoning. It enables council to consider rezoning land from one zone enabled within a designation to another enabled within the same designation, which directs us to policy 3.2.3, and criteria A further directs to policy 3.2.2. Both the highway commercial zone, which is the current zoning of the property, and the proposed zone, which is a mixed commercial residential C3, are listed within this policy. As a result, council is able to consider this rezoning. And again, this is an additional policy that applies to all rezoning applications. Criteria A of the policy, we would need to check if it would be appropriate to place the proposed zone on the subject property, whether the intent of the proposed zone is met through this rezoning. And this is the intent of the proposed zone. I'm going to read this again. Lands located in the zone are intended to complement established commercial areas. These areas shall generally be located on main transportation corridors and associated side streets that have commercial development, traditional main street areas within commercial areas that have not yet experienced much development, or areas where flexibility between residential and commercial uses is desired, and to permit both residential and lower impact commercial uses such as local retail or business offices in the same area of a growth center. So again, bringing up the zoning of the area. The property has frontage on Prospect Road, which is a main transportation corridor. The property is located within the C5 zone, and the other properties to the south are also within the C5 zone. As I mentioned previously, the C5 zone is for commercial uses that is meant to serve the traveling public. So it does not permit any residential uses. However, most of the properties within the zone are developed with residential uses at this time. And coming back to the subject property, so as we can see here, the property is located on the periphery of the C5 zone, from where the zoning transitions to the A4 zone, which is a country residential zone, which is meant for low-density neighborhoods in predominantly agricultural areas. So it is kind of located at a transitional area. And placing the C3 zone on the subject property, as I mentioned, the C3 zone permits all forms of residential uses, and it also permits commercial uses, which are considered lower impact and which are desired close to residential neighborhoods. So placing the C3 zone on the property would offer that flexibility, which would be ideal for the property because it is located in a transitional area, and the uses permitted within the C3 zone would also be compatible with the existing residential uses in the area. And with regards to the impact, as I said, the rezoning would be from a higher-impact zone, which is the C5 zone, to a lower-impact zone, which is the C3 zone. And also, the area is generally residential in nature, and the C3 zone and the permitted uses within the C3 zone would be appropriate for the neighborhood and would be compatible with the surrounding uses. So staff are of the opinion that the proposed use and the other uses permitted within the zone are appropriate for the subject property. And the general policy, criteria C, general policy, the application was assessed against the relevant criteria, and it was found to be consistent with the intent of the municipal planning strategy. There are no conflicts with any municipal or provincial programs, bylaws, or regulations. There's no financial impact on the municipality because of the proposal. There are no issues with regards to land use compatibility. The property is within proximity to schools, recreation, and community facilities. There are no concerns with regards to traffic hazards, congestion, access, or egress. The New Minus Fire Chief did not indicate any concerns regarding fire protection services or equipment. Village of New Minus confirmed that there are sewer lines to which the property could be connected. With regards to potential for flooding or serious drainage problems, so as I mentioned, the majority of the property is within the environmentally sensitive area overlay. So they will have to submit a report at the time of permitting, and the report submitted will be required to address drainage at that time. With regards to soil erosion, the property owner will be required to follow the provincial soil erosion controls during any construction. And site suitability, because of its proximity to the water course, we did reach out to Nova Scotia Environment, asking if they have any concerns, but we did not receive any response from them. The land use bylaw requires a 50-foot setback from a water course, and this will need to be maintained by the proposed development. Again, a recap of the process. A public information meeting was not required for this application. The application went to Planning Advisory Committee in February this year, and it was given first reading by council in March. We are at the public hearing. Properties within 500 feet were notified of the hearing, and it was also advertised on social media and our website. Soon after the public hearing, there will be a second reading for this application, and a decision will be made. The decision will be advertised on our website, and the application will move on to a 14-day appeal period. That concludes my presentation. I pass it back to the chair for comments from public.
Thank you, Ms. Jacob. Does any member of council have any questions of clarification? Counselor Gates.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Jacobs, are sidewalks also apply to this property for the village in Minus? Does it fall under that sidewalk?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, it does.
All right. One quick comment I would make and try and phrase it in a question, I'm not so sure. I would just say whoever the developer is should be congratulated to taking a mess and turning it into a nice development. That would be my opinion. Anyway, now I would ask, is there any member of the public that would like to come forward? Again, they would have five minutes to speak on this matter. No? Okay. Then, again, I would like to thank everyone for coming. I would declare this public hearing adjourned. I would note that the public information that these items are on the agenda for the council meeting directly following this hearing for second reading, and you're certainly all welcome to stay. All right. So now, we will move on to our council meeting for April 1st, and I would declare that all council members are present and accounted for, and we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Is there any additions that anyone would like to make to the agenda? I know that we had one late addition. No? All right. So please... to the agenda? I know that we had one late addition. No? All right. So, please note that the one addition that has been added is the CAO role relative to positions of the treasurer and clerk. So, could I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended, please? Moved by Counselor Gates, second by Counselor Hiltz. All those in favor, please vote. Okay, motion approved. So, at this time, I would ask, is there any member of council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the items that we are going to go over during our council meeting? No? Okay, then we'll move on to the approval of the minutes for our February the 26th, 2025 special council meeting. That was one day after my birthday, by the way, for any of those that forgot about it. Moved by Counselor Sappington, second by Counselor Lutz. All those in favor, please vote. Motion carried. All right, we'll move on to March the 4th. Do we have a motion there to approve those minutes? Moved by Counselor Harding, second by Counselor Allen. All those in favor or against, please vote. Motion carried. Okay. Is there any business arising from the minutes of February the 26th special council meeting? No? Okay. All right, March the 4th, 2025. Is there any business arising from those minutes that any counselor is aware of? No? Okay, we'll move on to the Planning Advisory, and Counselor Lutz, Chair of that, will be reading the recommendations. Counselor Lutz.
Thank you, Mayor Corcom. Our first item is Item A. The motion is that municipal council give second reading to the application to rezone a vacant property located on Prospect Road, PID 55199145, New Minas, from the highway commercial C5 zone to the mixed commercial C3 zone, as described in the Appendix D of the report dated February 11th, 2025, ISO move.
We have a second there. Second by Counselor Allen. Okay, any further discussion or questions to Counselor Lutz on the motion? No? Okay, all those in favor, signal. For or against, please vote. Okay, motion carried. Now, application to rezone the property at 5329 Prospect Road in the Minus. Counselor Lutz.
Thank you, Mayor. The motion reads that municipal council give second reading to the application to rezone the property located at 5329 Prospect Road, PID 55199129, New Minus, from the highway commercial C5 zone to the mixed commercial residential C3 zone, as described in Appendix D of the report dated February 11th, 2025, ISO move.
Okay. Second by Counselor Best. Any further discussion or questions to Counselor Lutz on that motion? No? All those in favor or against, please vote. Motion carried. Now, application to rezone a portion of property at 7015 Highway 1 Colebrook. Counselor Lutz.
Thank you, Mayor. The motion reads that municipal council give first reading to and hold a public hearing regarding the application to rezone 1.94 acres of 7015 Highway 1, PID 55153811, Colebrook, from the heavy industrial M2 zone to the light industrial commercial M1 zone, as described in Appendix C of the report dated March 11th, 2025, ISO move.
We have a second there. Second by Counselor Hiltz. Any questions to Counselor Lutz on the motion? All right, all those in favor or against, please vote. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, the next one is application to rezone property at Ernst Drive in Aylesford. Counselor Lutz.
Thank you, Mayor. The motion reads that municipal council give first reading to and hold a public hearing regarding the application to rezone a parcel of vacant land on Ernst Drive, PID 55552640, Aylesford, from the residential 1 and 2 unit R2 zone to the residential mixed density R3 zone, as described in Appendix C of the report dated March 11th, 2025, ISO move.
Second by Counselor Sappington. All those, do you have, anyone have any questions to Counselor Lutz on the motion? No? All those in favor or against, please vote. Okay, motion carried. And do we have a date for our next public hearing?
We certainly do. Next month, our public hearing will be Tuesday, May 6th, 2025, at 6:00 PM here in these chambers. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Counselor Lutz. Now, we will move on to administration. We have a proclamation request from the Autism Acceptance Month in Gaelic Nova Scotia. Municipal Clerk is to present these two proclamation requests.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we have two proclamation requests on the agenda tonight. The first one is for Autism Acceptance Month. We received this request from Autism Nova Scotia, and this is actually already the ninth time that we've had this proclamation. It's been since 2017. And I'd like to note that there will be a flag raising and proclamation reading event this Friday, April the 4th, at noon. And the recommended motion is that municipal council proclaim April 2025 to be Autism Acceptance Month in the municipality of the County of Kings.
Okay, we have a mover and a second there. Moved by Counselor McPherson, second by Deputy Mayor Peckford. All those in favor or against, please vote. Okay, motion carried. And the second one, clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the second proclamation request is for Gaelic Nova Scotia Month. We received this request from the Gaelic Council of Nova Scotia, and this is the third time we've received this request. And I'd like to note that the municipality will be flying the Gaelic flag for the month of May, and the recommended motion is that municipal council proclaim May 2025 to be Gaelic Nova Scotia Month in the municipality of the County of Kings.
Okay, we have a mover and second. Moved by Counselor Lutz, second by Counselor Hiltz. All those in favor or against, please vote. Okay, motion carried. Now, we'll move on to the CAO relative to positions of the treasurer
Mr. Mayor, good evening, council. So, a fairly brief presentation here. A request for consent under the Municipal Government Act. So, in terms of background here, the MGA sets out the requirements on how the positions of treasurer and clerk are filled. So, it sets out the responsibilities of the CAO, and it also sets out the responsibilities of municipal council. Specific to our municipality and relative to the appointments of clerk and treasurer, they were made as a condition of employment, so they were included as provisions within accepted employment letters of offer. Positions of Director of Finance and IT, which included role of treasurer, needs to be filled, as you are aware, and our municipal clerk may be out of the office on an intermittent basis. In terms of authority, so more specifically here with the MGA, the clerk is covered under Section 33.1, which basically indicates that the chief administrative officer shall designate an employee of the municipality to perform the duties of the clerk. So, the CAO does that appointment. Very similar, Section 37.1 of the MGA authorizes the chief administrative officer to designate an employee of the municipality to perform the duties of treasurer. Very interesting, or contra to this, a bit of an offset, is the responsibilities of the CAO. So, if we go to 31.4, it says, notwithstanding those two sections, the chief administrative officer may, with the consent of council, perform the duties of clerk, treasurer, or any of them pursuant to the Act. So, while I can appoint those two positions, I cannot serve personally unless I have the consent of council. So, due to the recent operational considerations, and I could say, I could indicate things like tax sale certificates and deeds and various things that need to be executed, that, you know, given our current circumstances and the temporary intermittent vacancies in these roles, so what I'm requesting is that municipal council pursuant to that 31.4 MGA approve the CAO, perform those duties while the director of finance and IT positions is being filled and during the periods when the clerk and treasurer are temporarily out of office. This request for council consent is being made to cover a term that coincides with the term of the present-day council. So, it would not be forever. It would be for the term of council. So, that would have to be renewed when the new council takes office. So, the recommendation, I apologize, but the suggested motion is a little long here. I can read it into the record. That municipal council pursuant to Section 31.4 Municipal Government Act provide its consent for the municipality's chief administrative officer to serve as clerk or as treasurer during periods of time when either of these positions are temporarily vacant, or during periods when an appointed municipal clerk or treasurer are temporarily out of office, and that the period of time of this consent be limited to the term of office of the present-day municipal council, expiring when a new council is sworn in after the 2028 general municipal election. Happy to take any questions you may have.
Okay. Counselor Lutz.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you. Just a brief question. Does the MGA consider the deputy CAO in the same legal status as the CAO, or is it just the CAO that it applies to? And I mean, I would assume it's just the CAO because it's pretty clear language, but I was just curious if the deputy CAO holds the same standing within the MGA as the CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Counselor Lutz. The Act does read CAO, but that doesn't say, doesn't mean that the CAO, for example, couldn't appoint the deputy CAO as the treasurer or municipal clerk.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Do we have a mover for the recommendation? Please. Moved by Counselor McPherson, second by Counselor Gates. All those in favor or against, please vote. Okay, motion carried. Now, we'll move on to engineering and public works. The 2020-2024 Lake Monitoring Program Report. Dan Hagan, our Strategic Projects Specialist, and Sarah Burko, our Climate Change Project Specialist, will present the first part of the presentation. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Corcom, and members of council. Thank you for having us today to present to you the results of the 2020 to 2024 Lake Monitoring Report. For those in council who haven't had the pleasure yet to meet me, my name is Dan Hagan. I'm Strategic Projects, I read that wrong. And I am the Strategic Project Specialist for the municipality.
We expected that from Conrod, not you.
Yeah. And today I have with me to assist in the presentation our climate change specialist, Sarah Burko, as well as our environmental consultants from Coastal Action. As part of the evening's presentation to you all, our team will endeavor to provide you with some background details on the Lake Monitoring Program, a review of the results of the program from 2020 to 2024, and some details on the next steps of the program for 2025. At the end of our presentation, there will be an opportunity for you to ask us questions regarding our presentation for the various subject matter experts tonight. I will be able to assist you with the general and background-related questions. Coastal Action's representatives will be able to assist with any questions on the report, and Sarah will be able to answer questions on whether the lake, where the Lake Monitoring Program is going. And for any planning-related questions, Laura Mosher, our manager of planning, is here to assist as well. So first, some background. The Lake Monitoring Program had its origins in the 1990s with the beginning of the Lake Monitoring Program focused largely on lakes within the Gaspro River watershed in 1997. Over time, the program has grown to include additional lakes and other watershed areas, including for the La Havre River watershed, the Cornwallis River watershed, as well as lakes not connected to any of those watersheds. One important thing to note is that lake water quality monitoring is not in municipal jurisdiction. It is a provincial matter. However, the municipality has conducted the Lake Monitoring Program for many years as a citizen science program. Interestingly, the Kings County Lake Monitoring Program is one of the longest-running citizen science programs in Canada. The current Lake Monitoring Program has 13 lakes that we sample, including Lake George, Loon Lake, Aylesford Lake, Gaspro Lake, Murphy Lake, Little River Lake, Black River Lake, Lumston Pond, Sunken Lake, Tupper Lake, Armstrong Lake, Lake Torment, and Hardwood Lake. In 2024, our Lake Monitoring Team requested assistance with the municipal, sorry. In 2024, our Lake Monitoring Team requested the assistance of the municipality's GIS team to assist with the development of an updated and more detailed watershed drainage order plan for the program. Our GIS team created a very detailed map for us that included additional details that we didn't necessarily have before, lake locations of Nova Scotia power dams, lake sampling locations, watershed identification and drainage orders that we were able to provide to our volunteers and to our new consultants at Coastal Action. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the folks in GIS for their assistance. It was really helpful and really important for us going forward. Ultimately, in its core, the Lake Monitoring Program is a volunteer-led project, and the volunteers sample 12 of the lakes in the program each month of the program year, while municipal staff are responsible for the coordination of the program and water sample management, as well as sampling of the program's control lake, which is Hardwood Lake. Historically, the program has involved six sampling events per year between May and October. However, as part of the input provided by the Lake Monitoring Volunteers last year in our May kickoff meeting, it was decided to reduce the number of sampling events to five events per year. The October sampling event was removed as it was proving to be too difficult for the volunteer base, given issues related to low water quality, water levels, boats already having been winterized for the season, and potentially challenging late-fall/winter-type weather conditions that can occur at that time of year. And that leads me to a very important part of this presentation, the recognition of our volunteers for all the work that they do and have done for the Lake Monitoring Program. Many of our volunteers have been part of the program for many years. Some, I believe, have been with the program since its inception. And more recently, we have added some new volunteers to the network to help with the ongoing work of the program. Without the volunteers helping us, getting the lake sampled every month, this Lake Monitoring Program would not be possible in any form. And for anyone in the public here in council chambers today or listening to the presentation online, we are always looking for new volunteers to help us with the program. And if you are interested, please reach out to Sarah. I'm confident she would be pleased to chat with you more on volunteer opportunities with So that gets us to fall 2024, where our Lake Monitoring Team put out a request for proposals for environmental consultants to prepare a 2020 to 2024 Lake Monitoring Program Report based on the data that had been collected over the previous five-year period. Ultimately, Coastal Action was retained as our environmental consultant for the work, and over the and over the winter, they prepared a report for the municipality that summarizes their review and interpretation of this data. So at this point, I will pass on the presentation over to Coastal Action to discuss the report. And after they have completed their part of the presentation, Sarah Burko will discuss with you all the next steps for the program in two thousand and twenty-five. So please welcome Coastal Action.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Corcom and councillors. My name's Nick Morrison, and I am a project coordinator on the Watersheds and Water Quality Team at Coastal Action.
My name's Matt Malino, I'm the program manager for the Watersheds and Water Quality Team at Coastal Action. I will be filling in for Beth McLoughlin tonight. Pardon me. Okay, so Coastal Action's community-based, nonprofit, environmental organization based in Mahone Bay, Nova Scotia, with a strong focus on research, monitoring, restoration, education, and public engagement. While our role as consultants involves research, data analysis, and reporting, the boots-on-the-ground work from the Kings County Lake Monitoring Program is done by volunteers. You've helped create one of the longest-running citizen science efforts in Canada. We are proud to have worked alongside the municipality of the County of Kings and the dedicated volunteer community behind this longstanding program. So a project snapshot, when we talk about citizen science, we're really talking about the community ownership. People taking direct responsibility for the health of their environment, that's powerful and it's rare. What's happening here in Kings County is something to be proud of. Here's what your collective efforts have made possible. Over two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-four, thirteen lakes across Kings County were monitored, spanning three major watersheds. Volunteers sampled from May to September, or May to October in earlier years. For each lake, we calculated a water quality index, or WQI, score, which is based on six important parameters. So we take into account total phosphorus, which tells us about the nutrient levels, total nitrogen, which is another key nutrient indicator, chlorophyll A, which is linked to algae growth, pH, which shows the acidity or alkalinity of the water, turbidity, which is how clear or cloudy the water is, and temperature as well, which is important factor with aquatic life. This gives us a clear, easy-to-stand, easy-to-understand score to help us track lake health over time. There's a saying, what gets measured, gets managed. So watershed flow, so everything is connected, especially water. Lakes are part of watersheds where water flows through the landscape from one body to another. Understanding flow helps us interpret data. For example, a downstream lake may show changes caused by upstream activity. Your sampling efforts help reveal how human activities, weather, events, and seasonal changes ripple through the watershed. These connections remind us that lake health is a shared responsibility across the region. Another important thing we want to cover is flowage lakes. So flowage lakes are created by damming rivers, often for hydroelectric power. These physical changes can affect how nutrients move through the lake and how aquatic life responds. Volunteer data helps us understand how these human-altered systems behave over time. Several lakes in Kings County, including Gaspro Lake, Aylesford Lake, Black River Lake, Little River Lake, and Lumston Pond are examples of flowage lakes. These lakes can behave differently from naturally occurring lakes. Another key term we want to go over is dystrophic lakes. So most lakes in Kings County are what scientists call dystrophic, which is also known as humic or brownwater lakes. Brownwater doesn't mean bad water, though. These lakes are naturally acidic, they have high levels of organic matter, and that's usually from the surrounding forests and soils. And it has been found to support lower levels of biodiversity than clearwater lakes. Dystrophic lakes can be tricky to analyze, their natural chemistry behaves differently than clearwater lakes, particularly in how phosphorus and algae interact. This means we need to analyze them differently, and it's also why your sampling and consistent data is so important. Long-term data helps us all to better understand these complex systems. And just to note, there's only two lakes in the program that are not dystrophic, and that is Sunken Lake and Tupper Lake.
All right, so getting into determining the results. So like Matt had said, at each lake, we conducted the water quality index, as well as also conducting two other analyses to interpret these results for lake health. And these include the specific parameter analysis, as well as a trend analysis. Throughout this presentation, we'll be focusing on the results from the water quality index, though, as it provides lake health classifications, which can easily be compared over time and from lake to lake. So the water quality index is a tool that provides a score and classification of a lake health by running tests on water quality results. The scoring system is arranged from zero to a hundred, where a score of zero indicates the worst water quality, and a score of a hundred would indicate the best. This means that if a water quality index score for a lake was found to be a hundred, no samples collected from this lake had exceeded any guideline values. So using the water quality index, we are able to develop these lake health water quality report cards, which we've included in the report and will go over throughout this presentation. And these cover the lake health from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-four. Looking at this from top to bottom, each report card starts with two maps, which highlight the lake's location in the county and where the samples were taken on the lake. Moving downward from the left-side map, this takes us to our section of lake information, which provides a bit more insight into the lake's size and drainage, as well as other characteristics. Next to this is the water quality index scoring table, which shows the lake's score for each year over the five years of sampling. And then there's also a scoring classification scale provided, and these are color-coded to display which classification the lake is for each year, where red is poor, orange is marginal, yellow is fair, light green is good, and dark green is excellent. And to wrap up these report cards, we have our table at the bottom, which includes the averages for each parameter for each year. We won't dive into these during this presentation, however, values in red found within this table are exceedances of the guideline, and values with NA means that data was not collected during that time for that parameter. So moving on to each lake's health analysis from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-four, we'll start with Lake George. And so Lake George is one of the most upstream lakes on the Gaspro River watershed and is first in its drainage order. From two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-four, lake health varied between fair, good, and excellent. And the two thousand and twenty-four scoring of this lake was declared as fair. Similarly to Lake George, Loon Lake is also one of the most upstream lakes on the Gaspro River watershed, and it is also first in drainage order. In two thousand and twenty-four, Loon Lake's scored a lake health classification of fair, and this score was consistent throughout the sampling period. Aylesford's Lake, which is second in drainage order, is also located in the Gaspro River watershed, oh, sorry, sorry about that. Aylesford Lake is second in drainage order as it is located downstream of both Lake George and Loon Lake in the Gaspro River watershed. Over the five-year sampling period, this lake had health classifications of marginal and fair, with lake health in two thousand and twenty-four being classified as fair. Gaspro Lake, which is the largest lake in the Gaspro River watershed, located downstream from Aylesford Lake, is third in drainage order. In two thousand and twenty-four, lake health was classified as fair, which was the most common scoring over these five years. However, in two thousand and twenty-two, the lake had a score of marginal, and in two thousand and twenty-three, the lake's health scoring was good. Murphy Lake is located upstream of Little River Lake in the Gaspro River watershed and is also third in drainage order. Over the sampling period, Murphy Lake scored fair and good for lake health, with one of the two classifications of good lake health being observed in two thousand and twenty-four. Little River Lake, which is located downstream of Gaspro Lake and Murphy Lake, is fourth in drainage order and flows into Black River Lake. In two thousand and twenty-four, lake health was classified as fair for the lake, and this was consistent across the sampling period, except for two thousand and twenty-three as water quality index could not be completed and no score could be assigned due to insufficient water levels. Black River Lake, which is fifth in drainage order, is located downstream of Little River Lake and upstream of Lumston Pond. In two thousand and twenty-four, lake health was classified as fair, and this classification was consistent for all years except two thousand and twenty-two, where a score of marginal lake health was observed. Sorry about that. Lumston Pond is the most downstream lake in Gaspro River watershed and is sixth in drainage order. Lake health was classified as fair in two thousand and twenty-four, and this classification was consistent for all years except two thousand and twenty-two, where a score of marginal lake health was observed. Hardwood Lake is located in the La Havre River watershed, and it does not flow into any of the other lakes that are included in this sampling program. Hardwood Lake, as Dan had mentioned, is the control lake of the sampling program due to the low development in this area, and this is sampled by municipal staff. In two thousand and twenty-four, lake health was classified as fair, and lake health ranged from fair to excellent over the sampling period. Armstrong Lake is located in the La Havre River watershed upstream of Lake Torment. Over the five years of sampling, lake health was classified as marginal and fair, with readings of marginal occurring in two thousand and twenty and in two thousand and twenty-four. Lake Torment is located downstream of Armstrong Lake in the La Havre River watershed. In two thousand and twenty-four, lake health was classified as marginal, and this was consistent across all five years of the sampling period. Tupper Lake is located in the Cornwallis River watershed and is disconnected from all the other lakes involved in the lake sampling program, as it's the only one found in this watershed. Lake health was classified as fair, and the lake health varied from good to fair across the two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-four sampling period. Sunken Lake is unique compared to the other lakes in the sampling program, as it is entirely spring-fed. This lake is found within the basin of the Gaspro River watershed, however, it is not connected whatsoever as it is completely spring-fed and does not have any outflow. In two thousand and twenty-four, lake health was classified as fair for Sunken Lake, and we saw classifications of fair and good throughout the five-year sampling period. Overall, this is a graph that shows the water quality index scoring for each year at each lake over the two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-four sampling period. This shows that over this five-year period, lake health in the lake, lake health in each lake sampling program has been determined to range from marginal to excellent. This is good news because it meant that no lake classified as having poor water quality from the water quality index.
So in conclusion, a benefit of this longstanding water quality program is that collecting water quality data over long periods of time means that lakes can be observed and lake stability can be understood. This allows for any observations of rapid or slow changes that may be occurring. Continuing this work is essential to observe any changes that could be occurring to lake health in Kings County. Bringing this information to the public can inspire communities to do their part in maintaining the health of their lakes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we'd like to thank Coastal Action for their report and their presentation, and again, our dedicated volunteers for all their work in making this program possible. So this year, we plan on continuing, continuing the program, and we plan to have annual reporting moving forward. Our kickoff will be early May, and this report and all the report cards will be posted on our website. And I look forward to leading this year's monitoring program. Thanks.
So this brings us to the end of the presentation, everyone, and our recommendation to council is that municipal council receive the April first, two thousand and twenty-five briefing regarding the results of the two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-four lake monitoring programs as information. Thank you again, council, for having us here today, and we would be happy to answer any of your questions that you may have.
Counselor Lutz.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. I just want to say thank you so much, this is something very near and dear to my heart. I was the chair of this program for the first four years I had on council, and I really enjoyed all of the time I got to learn, and I learned so much as part of that, so. My only question is, in terms of timelines of reporting, will this continue to be like a four-year reporting cycle? Or will we report every year? Like, what's the plan going forward for the reporting back of the annual results?
We're definitely planning on being yearly now, moving forward.
Perfect, thank you so much. Thanks, Mayor.
Counselor Gates.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, it's a commendable job you're doing, congratulations. I do have one quick question, is it possible to include in your testing, you do nitrogen tests now, but, and one question I would have is, are you able to test for nitrates?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Gates. You know, it's always possible to expand parameter lists for this. You know, historically, we haven't sampled for nitrates, and it's certainly something we could look into. Ultimately, what it comes down to is cost, and then what are, you know, and then what are we doing with that, with that value? But I think that's maybe something we could take a look at internally and see about.
I really think that might be an important factor with the, with the nitrate testing. It might give a heads-up, an early detection where we might see problems down the road, so.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Gates. Alan, I mean, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor, through you to the presenters. I was just curious, once you collect the water samples, where are they tested?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Allen. Historically, we have typically had the samples tested at the Kiwi Two Hospital through Nova Scotia Health. That's historically been the, the best value for us in the program from a cost perspective. But we have at, you know, particularly during the COVID years, where the Kiwi Two lab was otherwise engaged, we had to go to alternative labs for that, you know, but that changes the cost of what we're doing here. So that's typically what we've done, and I think, I think Sarah and EPW are, are looking into that for future years now.
One more question if I may, who pays for the cost of testing the water?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Allen, we pay, the municipality pays for the cost of the analysis in our, in our operational budgets.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Deputy Mayor Packford.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. Thank you for the presentation, it was very informative. Is there any intent to grow the number of lakes that are being monitored? Just look at ones such as, sorry, Lake Paul, which has a fair amount of development on it. Just curious if there's a plan in the future to include that lake.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor Packford. At this point, we hadn't really discussed expansion of the program, just because of, you know, basically, it's, it's, it's a lot already. But also, you know, expanding the volunteer network is, is sometimes proving difficult as particularly our volunteer network is, in some ways, starting to, age-out isn't the right term, but that they, yeah, we've lost some volunteers over the years who either have moved away or just are no longer interested or able to, to help us with the, with the program. But it's, I think it's always kind of something that we've thought about, but I can't really say we've, we've, we've discussed it for next year or not. But it's, I guess it's always something we can consider, depending on the direction.
Thank you, see if we can find you some volunteers.
Counselor Hiltz.
Thank you, Mayor, through you, great presentation and excellent work. Just curious as to the testing, I think it was, you'd mentioned earlier, it went from spring to the fall in two thousand and twenty-three, I think? Just wondering the rationale for that?
Sorry, yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Hiltz. Was your question about why we reduce the number of sampling events per year, or?
No, just, I think the data changed, it was originally a spring sample, and then it went to fall, I believe I saw.
Oh, sorry, no, through you, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Hiltz. Well, historically, it's been six events per year, so starting in May and going throughout the summer and then ending in October. But because October, it can be a temperamental month here in the valley, our volunteer network asked if we could basically stop sampling in October because it was, it was quite difficult for everyone. So we, we reduced it to May, June, July, August, and September only last year, and that's kind of where we're planning on going this year.
Okay, thank you. May I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
Okay, through you. Okay, through you, Mayor. It's actually for the Coastal Action Group, if I may, has nothing to do with Kings County, but just wondering if, Shearbrook Lake, do you do testing there?
We, through you, Mayor Corcom, to Counselor Hiltz. We've done previous testing there for, we did a sampling program at Shearbrook Lake, and so we do have some data on that, but I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay.
Like if there's any specific questions.
Okay, no offense. It's good to hear. It's the home of the only verified gray or lake trout in the province, so.
Yeah, I, I believe that we have information on Shearbrook Lake, if you're interested, on our website, but it was specifically for the lake trout.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Harding.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for the, the informative information. I was on the lake watering, water last term, and it was an eye-opener. I live on Lake George, and it's very important to all of us to have nice, clean water. I would just want to bring up one more thing that on Lake Torment, there's a provincial study going on out there sponsored by the provincial government, trying to find out the cause of blue-green algae, algae. So I just wanted to mention that to everybody if they didn't know it, that Provincial has put a lot of money into it to try to, and a lot of people are, from the lake are working out there as well as volunteers to try to find out what's causing this, but they have been having a lot of trouble there. Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions and maybe a comment, and, and I agree with previous comments that it's very, very informative, and I appreciate having you here this evening. One, one is a very simple question, and I'm almost embarrassed to ask it. When they take these samples, can they do it from the shoreline, or do they have to get in a boat and physically have to get out on the lake?
I guess through you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor? We, we always actually go out in boats, so I can't speak to what type of boats all of the volunteers are using. I think a lot of people, it's probably a mix between motorized and non-motorized craft for when staff are going out. We've used kind of a mix, I think. When I've had to go out and do it, I've typically been using a canoe, and I think Sarah's been using paddle boards, which scare me even more. So, so, yeah, so all of the sampling locations are usually at the, like the deepest part of the lake, so there's like a buoy in each of the lakes where that, and sometimes they go missing, but most of the time they're still there in spring when we go back. And so that denotes the deepest part of the lake where, where the sampling occurs.
Thank you. My next question would be, and would probably be more for the coastal people, Coastal Action. How do we rate in Kings County as far as our lakes with your experience in other lakes and other counties? Are we doing pretty good, not doing very good, or about average, or what, what would your experience tell you? How's Kings County lakes compared to the others that you have monitored?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So from the other lakes that we've monitored, I don't know all of the scoring we've had for those previous off the top of my head, but something that comes to mind is from our La Haye River sampling, which is a bit of a different system, but usually, as long as you're not in poor, we find that it's like very, very good, and there's also really great opportunities for improving that health, so it's definitely going in the right direction.
Right. Okay. All right. All right, well, thank you. And the other comment that I would make, because this is volunteer-driven, and I'm fairly new, and some of the counselors are, my, my quick comment would be, hopefully we are recognizing these outstanding volunteers in our volunteer appreciation award ceremony because, wow, that's quite a, quite a commitment for, you know, for these, these volunteers to do, and certainly muchly appreciated. So hopefully, we are making sure that we're recognizing them, and if we haven't been, we, we should be. And the other last comment, I would say, it's certainly for those that haven't had the pleasure to meet you, Dan, we certainly had the pleasure of having your presentation from all of you this evening, and thank you very much. Great job. And do, do we have a motion to accept the recommendation move by Counselor Gates, second by Counselor Allen? All those in favor or against, please vote. Motion carried. Well, thank you again. Excellent. All right, now we'll get on to, oh, whoa, where are you going? The meeting's not over. Now we'll go to financial services. Change of bank signing officers, and we'll have Scott McKay, our revenue manager, presenting. Mr. McKay.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I am proposing this evening a change, at least temporarily, to the signing arrangements for all banking documents, including the signing of checks for the municipality of the County of Kings. Over time, circumstances give rise to the need to make changes to our signing arrangements with the, with the municipality's financial institution. First and foremost, we have elections. At other times, a municipality may have to deal with leaves of absence, extended illnesses, or temporary vacancies. In the interest of business continuity, signing officers must be amended to accommodate these events and keep the municipality functional from a banking standpoint. The authority provided to a signing officer is limited to such things as authorizing instruments such as checks, the wiring of funds, or the change of signing officers. Under the current banking signing arrangements, it is required that two people sign any banking documents or checks, and that is not proposed to change. One signature is that of an elected official, specifically the mayor or deputy mayor, and the second signature would, that would be for a designated staff member, either the chief administrative officer, the director of finance and IT, or the manager of revenue. The change proposed is to at least temporarily replace the director of finance and IT with the deputy chief administrative officer. So the recommendation is that municipal council approve the changes to the current arrangements for bank signing officers to temporarily replace the director of finance and information technology with the deputy chief administrative officer. With that, I could answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions to Mr. McKay? No? We'd like to move the motion. Moved by Counselor McPherson, second by Counselor Hiltz. All those in favor or against, please vote. Okay, motion carried. Okay, we'll move on to item number 10. 10A, which is award of a contract 25-12 Me Road easement sewer upgrade, that municipal council pre-approved debt issuance and use of capital reserves for the fiscal year 2025-26 for the increased capital cost of $356,000, $356,050 associated with the Me Road easement sewer upgrade is detailed in the request for decision dated March 18th, 2025. Moved by Counselor Lutz, second by Counselor Allen. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion carried. Okay, so we'll go to 10B now. Contract 2025-12 Me Road easement sewer upgrade, so that the, the municipal council award contract 25-12 Me Road easement sewer upgrade to Atlantic snow and ice management in the amount of $723,998.07, including non-recoverable HST as described in the request for decision dated March 18th, 2025. Do we have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor Harding, second by Counselor Lutz. All those in favor or against, please vote. Thank you. Motion carried. Okay, the next one is amendments to policy FIN-05-2006 tax exemption for nonprofit organizations, that the municipal council give seven days' notice per 48-1 Municipal Government Act to amend policy FIN-05-026 tax exemption for nonprofit organizations as detailed in the March 18th, 2025 request for decision. Moved by Counselor Gates, second by Counselor Sappington. All those in favor or against, please vote. Motion carried. We'll move on to the fire department funding agreements, that municipal council provide direction to the mayor and CAO to enter into fire funding agreements for the non-contracted fire departments based on the March 18th, 2025 request for decision. A mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor Allen, second by Counselor Lutz. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion, motion carried. And the last one, the funding agreement for Kings Point-to-Point Transit Society, that municipal council instruct chief administrative officer to enter into an agreement with Kings Point-to-Point Transit based on the terms and conditions set out in March 18th, 2025 request for decision. Moved by Counselor Allen, second by Counselor McPherson. All those in favor or against, please vote. Motion carried. Okay, we'll move on to recommendations from the nominating committee. The recommend, recommendations are included in your agenda package. As chair of the nominating committee, citizen appointment to the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee, that the municipal council appoint Jordan Waterbury as citizen appoint, a citizen member to the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee for the rema, remain, remainder, reminder, remainder of the three-year term commencing April 1st, 2025 and ending May 31st, 2026. Moved by Counselor Sappington, second by Counselor Lutz. All those in favor or against, please vote. Motion carried. Now we have the citizen appointment to the police advisory board, that municipal council appoint Daniel Tony as the citizen member to the police advisory board on a two-year term commencing April 1st, 2025, conditional on criminal record and background checks. Moved by Deputy Mayor Packford, second by Counselor Best. All those in favor or against, please vote. Motion carried. Thank you. Now we'll move on to board and committee reports. The Kentville Fire Services Committee, this report was submitted by Counselor Hiltz, and so Counselor Hiltz, do you have anything to add to your report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'll get you, put your light on. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Through you, there is, when it says funds have been received from the municipality of the County of Kings and the Town of Kentville, so that would have been the last quarter, just to specify. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
And so you would like to move receipt of your report?
Yes, please.
Okay, and second by Counselor Best. All those in favor or against, please vote. Okay, we'll move along then committees of council. Is there any verbal reports that any member of council would like to make? Counselor Harding.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make it just a short one, that our last Kings Rehab meeting was held yesterday, and now the, the new name, and we'll go over to the new corporation, nonprofit, so we wound up with that, and I just want to let you know that the people, councilors that was on the board has offered to stay on privately, not from the county, representing the county, but to stay on as the board for, I think, one year, was it?
Yeah, for one year, so.
That's by, thank you.
Thank you. And you so move receipt of your report? Okay, and second by Counselor Allen. All those in favor signify, those in favor or against, please vote. Motion carried. Counselor Gates.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. I had sent my condolences to the Kentville Water Commission because we had our budget meeting on the 26th at the same time, so I chose to be here at our budget meeting, and I sent my regrets or my condolences.
Thank you. Maybe both.
Okay, so basically, you weren't there, so I guess you don't have a report. Okay, appreciate it. All right, external boards and committees. Are there any verbal reports on any external boards and committees? Counselor Lutz.
Thank you, Mayor. Not a report, but just I wanted to highlight the letter that was sent by yourself and the other mayors regarding the library funding formula to Minister Dave Ritzy of Community Cultures, Tourism, and Heritage, and just express my appreciation, and note that it was well-received and appreciated by the AVRL board, and hopefully, we see some good movement, and it's really nice to see the municipal partners speaking out in support of libraries, and I appreciate. speaking out in support of libraries and I appreciate the leadership of the municipality and yourself on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sappington?
I too had to send my regrets to the landscape of Grand Prey because of our March 26 budget meeting that was moved. Thank you.
What's the matter with you, councilors? Can't be in two places at once? Can't, unbelievable. I'll make a quick comment. I was on the regional sewer and we recently met and there has been a major concern, I mentioned to you previously, counsel, that in collections, we have an agreement for collections and we were told that, and this means about $2 million to Valley Waste, that they're not going to be allowed to pick up the recyclables in some of these smaller mom-and-pop areas. And so the group that is doing, paying us for picking up, so that would mean, for example, which would be ridiculous, we'd send a truck and a man all the way out to Lake Paul to pick up two bags of recyclables. So the only person that can change that is the minister of environment. So I made a motion that all seven chairs of the regions send a letter to the minister of environment asking him to help change that because, I mean, these trucks pick up everything every day and it would mean a big problem for some of these mom-and-pop operations or, you know, community halls and that type of thing. So it would mean that we either would not be picking it up or maybe it wouldn't be or it wouldn't be every two-week service or maybe it would mean we would continue doing it and sending absolutely inefficiently, send a truck and a man out to 100 of these places. And that wouldn't be probably in the best interest to the environment. So we're hoping that the minister will advise the group that we're working with and that maybe this is not a practical thing. And in fact, I had discussions today, I signed the letter going to the minister today with our general manager and he has been having some conversations and hopefully we'll get it resolved, but it's one of those situations that, that I hope a more reasonable alternative will come up. It's still, we still have negotiated a good deal with these people. I have no idea, but we're talking probably several hundreds of thousands of dollars if we have to and totally inefficient. So I just want to bring that forward. That was the main discussion at the end of the day at our meetings. That was, everybody was very, very concerned about that and that took most of our discussions. One lady that worked for the Department of Environment said, oh, no, we didn't think that we should get a hold of the minister. Anyway, that didn't fly. Anyway, anyone has any questions of me on that? But I think our general manager is Andrew Garretts is doing a great job and I'm sure that, you know, that I think the minister of environment will probably see that this would be a reasonable thing to change. The other, the other comment that I would make verbally would be Kings Transit and as you know, we finally got a new, a new general manager and I know she's excited to take over and former counselor here in Kings County and I believe she'll do a great job. But I can tell you right now, it's disheartening to go to some of those meetings and, well, it is and it isn't. Those buses are falling apart by the minute and the staff there are doing a phenomenal job of keeping them on the road and keeping them safe. And it's just, you know, we can't get new buses soon enough and that's a fact. And I'm sure that Meg, when she takes over, most of you know her, will probably want to look at improving the service the best she can. So that's, she's, she's an energetic young lady, there's no question about that. All right, so somebody like to move receipt of my verbal report on that for me, please? Moved by Counselor Harding, second by Counselor Lutz. All those in favor or against, please vote. Thank you. All right, correspondence. We have some correspondence now. So we have received correspondence from Courtney Harris on the recreation facility. We've also received some correspondence from the Blomden Naturalist Society Resource Development Concerns. We've also had some correspondence from Municipal Affairs, the Mandatory Code of Conduct Training. And we've also had correspondence from Laura Connors on the Acadia Pool closure. Would somebody like to move receipt of that correspondence? Moved by Counselor Sappington, second by Counselor Allen. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion carried, thank you. All right, other businesses. Is there any other business that's coming that anyone would like to bring up? Okay. Comments from the public. It's now time that any member of the public, unless they're a voted-in MLA, no, she's welcome too and we're pleased to have you here too. If you wish to come speak, you have two minutes and don't all speak at once. All right, no, all right, well, we'll move right along. All right, we're gonna have a motion to move into a closed session. And I don't think we're gonna be coming, are we gonna be coming back? No. So we would move the meeting adjourned into a closed meeting of council, please. Moved by Counselor Sappington, second by Counselor Gates. All those in favor or against, please vote. You can't stay because it's all secret because we're gonna talk about you. But it'd be all good. It'd be all good. Motion carried, meeting adjourned and you, thanks for coming.